Good afternoon. We're going to call this meeting to order. Welcome and thank you all for participating in City of Helena's administrative meeting this June 30th of 2021. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format and the city's efforts to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience some technical difficulties. We welcome your public commentary during the meeting. Please read the tips that are currently on your screen to guide your participation. Anyone who's in the attendance, watching this webinar will be automatically muted. Closed captioning is can be utilized and should be on right now by tapping the live transcription button on your Zoom toolbar. I'll call for any public commentary after action items on the agenda. And you can use the raised hand feature to notify the clerk that you would like to be called upon. You'll be unmuted and promoted so that you can provide your public comments. If for some reason you can't use the raised hand feature, you can use the question and answer feature to notify the clerk or commission of any comments or of any problems. If you have questions in the Q and A, they will be recorded but not necessarily answered today. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. If you're offering public commentary, please identify yourself by your name and last name. And we ask anyone who will be offering public commentary in the attendees room to actually list your first name and last name. At the end of the meeting, there will be a public commentary agenda item for anything that is not included on the agenda today. And if you need any assistance, you can click on the Zoom support link below. Commissioners, anything off the top before we dig into today's agenda?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yep.
Relative to, let's see what the item, city managers in the city managers report, item three A, I was given the mayor's absence and given the special significance, I'd say for the community. Be on at least a portion of this agenda item dealing with the memorandum of understanding for SROs in the Helena School District. I was wondering if we could defer that discussion until the next, perhaps the next administrative meeting so we could have a full commission.
Yeah, I mean, I saw your email and I think it makes sense. I mean, it doesn't seem worth it even to have the presentation or have a needed discussion today if we're going to end up rehashing the same thing. So my take was that we'd ask the manager to simply omit that item altogether. And we'll deal with it at the manager's discretion, dependent on the capacity of the next administrative meeting, whenever she sees fit to put that agenda item back on there. So I appreciate you bringing it up at the start because what I'm going to say is that city managers report item A, which is update to the commission on the status of police reform working issues. We are just going to scratch that from the agenda altogether today. Anyone who is here for that purpose, we are just going to be moving on today. And just keep, keep tuned for the next time that it's put on the agenda, either the next one or at the call of the manager. Does that work for all the members of the commission?
That works for me.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Great. All right. I guess Madam Clerk, would you mind taking the role?
Certainly Mayor Protem. Thank you. City Attorney Joden.
Here.
City Manager Harlow Schalk.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Lachlan.
Here.
Mayor Protem Halliday.
Here.
And Mayor Collins for the record has been excused.
All right, that brings us to recommendations from the Helena Citizens Council. Who do we have with us today from the Helena Citizens Council? I think I saw Nancy Perry in the attendees room.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor Protem and Commissioners. I'm Nancy Perry from HCC District Two. I only have a couple of items to mention to you today. The first item is the most recent meeting of HCC was last Wednesday, June 23rd. The city manager came to talk to us about the budget and to answer our questions. We learned a great deal from you, ma'am. We now have no excuse not to understand what a structurally balanced budget is. We appreciate your visit. Second, the last day to register for the city election in November was June 21st. Thanks to our amazing administrator Peggy Bankelman, we are running almost a full slate. As you probably already know, Helena is divided into seven HCC districts. There are four representatives elected from each district, making at most a total of 28 HCC members. And 27 people have registered to run to fill those positions. We lost one current member, Steve Allen, who has registered to run for a city commission. And if he wins, he's going to be following in the footsteps of Commissioner Halliday, who I believe used to be a member of HCC. And that's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks Nancy. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Perry or the HCC?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I do have one question. Now that the budget is more or less done, what's on the agenda for HCC coming up?
We are currently looking for topics that we would like to talk about. And then looking for people to invite to come and talk to us. We pretty much had tunnel vision during the budget process. That was kind of consumed all of our time. So right now we don't have a specific list of topics. But I believe by the next meeting, I could certainly give you some of those topics.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item free on our agenda, the city managers report as mentioned before. Item three A is not on the agenda today for the commission's discussion and direction. And so Madam Manager, item three B or anything else you got for us?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Halliday. I just have this update on our water resources and supply. And this morning I spoke with and we have in our attendees list, the team from our water treatment group. And what we're seeing and observing is not an actual aggressive and not an aggressive enough consumption reduction in Helena. We're also seeing record temperatures and low flows coming down from the mountains. So what we're seeing is that we're running 18 hours a day. Last week, we started the implementation of water reductions and really more around the idea of voluntary reductions. And now with today's update, I'm asking and will be moving us into stage three. This will be the first time that the City of Helena will be implementing water conservation efforts at a more aggressive method than we've done in the past. And that would be, we are going to be designating water days and days for watering that correspond to the last digit of the street address on the property and then restricting the hours for water watering within the community. We're also reducing our watering within city parks and in our operations to also as even in those areas where we're using well water, for example, reducing those areas because of recharge. So we want to do as much as we can to stop this consumption that we cannot manage based on the, the heat and the, the, just the low return on flow we're getting. In addition to that, we have, and I shared to you, a need for operators in our community. We do have open positions and I'm always going to encourage great qualified applicants to, to apply. But we do have and would, no matter what, be asking for coverage within our utilities team. So just to assure you, we do have the staff who are online making sure that the treatment is happening. We're currently running again at 18 hours. If we have any more consumption, we're talking about running 24 hours a day. And an exhaustion level of our team. So I want to note that this is also not only around consumption, but actually doing something that's sustainable within our team currently. So just wanted to make sure you know, we will be announcing that and trying to get ahead of what I, I do believe is probably one of the worst and hottest summers we've seen so early. We could handle this if this were August. These are consumption levels that we see in late August. And, and to have them at the beginning of July is quite concerning. So the, the implementation of this restriction would last until September 1, unless, and until it's reassessed, if, if there's some massive downpour or the, some sort of change in our, our weather. We'll keep a close watch on it. And if we do not see the reduction that we need, we would move to stage four, which is the worst stage and the highest stage of our consumption guidelines and requirements. And that would mean we would be implementing a fine structure and all outdoor water uses would be prohibited. Now, obviously, we don't want to get to that because we also have a secondary issue of wildfire. And we don't want to see more possibilities for fires in our community. So the, and very important that the citizens in our community take note that we have to implement this reduction and we need their help in doing so diligently so that we can maintain volumes and we don't have to implement that fourth strategy. And again, that would prohibit outside water use and then institute fines for other uses. So I just want to make sure that you are aware and up to date on our water consumption issues in the city. Now, you've heard me say the city has secure water. That's different than ongoing flow water. So our water is secure. That means we have the most secure water in the state. It is by ownership secure. Now, volume and, and consumption and obviously heat have a, a great deal of impact on that. And I look forward to more conversations with our public works team on how we can address this, this larger view of adding another 20,000 people into our community. And if we have the same kind of winter, or excuse me, summer in the future, what, what that means to us. And that's really the challenge, moving into the larger picture for our public works team. I have Ben Rigby, who's our water plant manager here. If you have more technical questions and then Jamie is covering, our, our lead engineer is covering Ryan, who is out today. So just want to offer up the opportunity to ask any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Ms. Harlow Schalk. Commissioners, any questions on that agenda item?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
You go ahead.
Or the manager of this, I think I understood you to say that the stage three restrictions would go into effect immediately. If that's accurate, then how, how do you, how do we communicate that to the public?
Thank you, Commissioner. The Jake, our public works to, our public information officer has been working with public works all day to come up with a fact sheet. I'll send it to you all. So you will see it after this meeting so that you can answer questions as you receive them. He's already put together a public announcement and we will be reaching out across all of our, our outreach activities. Also, we've been discussing the radio and mailers out to our, our customers, utilities customers.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the manager?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I guess I do have one. For the manager, if folks end up having questions about the stage three conservation efforts, who should they be contacting?
At this time, they can submit their questions as they do to the mayor and commission email list. And at this time, we don't have a separate water conservation number or, or address that, that email, that's mayor and commissioners@helena mt.gov. That address does go straight to our public information office as well. So they will grab those questions. And I think it's good for you to know too, what, what the types of questions are and whether or not we're getting ahead of some of these questions too.
Great, thank you.
Thanks Commissioner. Any other questions for the manager?
I guess I maybe have one, Mayor Protem. I apologize if you said this, but do you, how, it, how are you handling residential use versus commercial use?
Thank you, Commissioner. The, the distinction has been on addresses, not in particular the type of customer or even the area. Because the, the volume of and, and loss is so significant, we're, we're paying attention to just the addresses because that is the place in which we can start to watch consumption overall. So that's, that's the beginning and why we're, we're focusing on addresses and the, the days in which people can actually water.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious how like some of the bigger users, and I, I don't know quite how you know, our relationship with say like Carroll College, I mean, the golf course, you know, those types of things, like how, how they're potentially treated. Assuming that they're, I imagine larger users of, of water.
Yeah, great question. So yesterday the team sent over the list of larger water users, just so you have that context as well. I'm sorry, I'm not looking away from you. I'm trying to find the list here. The, just so you know, so for us, our larger users are Centennial Park, Memorial Park, Locky Park, Loki Park and Skeleton Park. So those parks are already implementing and have been since the stage two was in place, working on their changes and modifying the structures. But then the school districts, the football fields, Montana Interchange Highway, Showdare, Helena College of Technology, St. Peter's Airport Training Center and Airport filling stations are among the highest consumers. So we'll be reaching out to them directly to, to ensure they know. And of course, the golf course is on its own. And as we shared, it would be, it's on its own well, but we are, we are reducing their consumption as well because of the recharge. And it'd be mostly watering at night as well.
Thanks Commissioner. Anybody else have any other questions? All right, seeing none. Madam Manager, anything else for us?
Nope, that is it today. Thank you very much. If any questions for me, let me know.
All right, Commissioners, that brings us to item number four, city attorney update, 2020 legislative update. Mr. Joden.
Mayor Protem, Commissioners, thank you. I will turn it over to the two folks who put in the most work with this very busy and interesting and I would say difficult legislative session. So here with us today are Tim Burton, the deputy, or I'm sorry, the executive director of the Montana League of Cities and Towns and Kelly Lynch, who is the deputy director and general counsel to give us an update on the, the bills that passed in this past session. And Kelly and I worked together to come up with a, a list that we thought had the, the biggest impact to the cities. But if there are any specific bills that you have questions about, we will do our best to answer them. Kelly?
Yeah, hi everybody. Kelly Lynch with the league. I have identified some of the bills that I think Tim might want to jump in on here. But for the most part, I think we decided I'll just try and do a high level overview of the ones that are the biggest deal for you. And if you want to do some follow-up questions or even just some follow-up discussion, we can do that. But thank you very much, Mayor Protem and Commissioners for having us today. As you know, it was a pretty difficult session for local governments. We saw a lot of state interference in local authority on a whole bunch of different issues. Spent a lot of time pushing back on that. But when the areas of finance, we did pretty well. And as you know, we were getting a ton of ARPA money coming from a whole bunch of different areas. It's going to be able for local governments to access for a whole bunch of different uses. So that's all great news. I'll just quickly go through, I think you have a copy of the, of our final legislative report in front of you or available to you, and I'll kind of run through them. So we put this together in kind of six different areas that we attack and, and separate out who's going to lobby what during the session. So first is revenue and finance, always at the top of the list for local governments. Four bills that I want to hit on SB 385 was a bill related to consolidated special district stat, statute that went into effect in 2009. Helena has two of these. It's your landfill district and your open space district. Both of those will be affected by this bill because it, it essentially puts the brakes on both a long-term timeline for them at 13 years. And, and also limits them to inflation unless they were passed by the voters. And neither one of those ones were, they didn't meet the protest ceiling for that. So you're one of the few's that are going to be impacted by that. And I'm sure Thomas has given you the lowdown about the details on that. HB 159 is essentially just a, a new process for when the state receives unanticipated federal funding during the interim. It used to just essentially go to the budget office and be dealt with and distributed by them to be dealt with after the fact in HB three. And now that go, will go to legislative finance committee during the interim. If it's over, I believe $100,000 in additional funding. That might be the case. I need to update what I said in the report. It's not going to affect your direct ARPA allocation because that, that went into HB 632 and didn't come after the legislative session, but it may affect what comes in for any new infrastructure bill that gets passed it by the feds. So we'll keep tracking that and pay attention to what happens as that comes in. Keep your fingers crossed. Senate Bill 51, Tim, did you want to talk about the tax abatement for fiber optic bill that you've been on forever?
You bet. Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, Commissioners. Senate Bill 51 was another Senator Ellsworth bill. Essentially a tax abatement for the installation of new fiber optic. We oppose the We oppose the bill because it was another property tax classification cut across the board. And what we've experienced over the last several decades in Montana is when those classifications are cut or exempted, then the tax burden goes on to residential and commercial property taxpayers. It may be a good policy, but the, the outcome will be is that this will end up being a tax shift, in our opinion, to residential and commercial property. And I'll jump into Senate Bill 212 as well. Senator Osmondson's Property Tax Transparency Bill. And in theory, I think it makes sense, you know, if I'm going to compare my property tax bill, I go to my tax file and look at last year's tax bill and then compare it to my new tax bill. This has requirements specifically for counties and cities to show voted levies, you know, what's the rate of increase, et cetera. And it, and it exempts schools. And as you know, schools and, and the state of Montana represent about 70% of the property tax liability. Schools and cities combined about 20%. So I, I felt that if we're really going to be transparent, we need to include the full range of property tax allocations if, if in fact we're going to be transparent. With that, Kelly, I'll pass the ball to you on infrastructure.
Yeah, so lots of activity on infrastructure, as you can imagine. Typical infrastructure bills are HB 6, which is the RRGL program out of DNRC. House Bill 7, which is the reclamation grants typically see that for cleanup in areas related to water. House Bill 8, House Bill 11 is TSEP and House Bill 14 is Long Range Planning Bonding Bill. So any projects that were going to be funded with TSEP cash, RRGL cash, and state capital improvements funds were being put into HB 14 to be paid for with bonding. After the money came in from ARPA, they essentially funded everything, both on the original bills and HB 14 that were going to be funded with bonds. They funded everything with ARPA money. So that's where a big chunk of the ARPA funds went into. So the good news from that is not only that everything does get funded, but also that in the next round, there will be all of those funds left over to, to, to distribute and award in the next legislative session. So you'll see more projects be able to be funded in that next legislative session. SRF got an increased bonding capacity to help leverage those dollars against the federal SRF program. So that's great news. That was House Bill 62. House Bill 632 is, is the big ARPA bill. If you haven't read through it already, please get that out. If you have problems sleeping at night, you can read through that 100-page bill. But it allocates essentially, the important part for you is it allocates both your direct ARPA allocation, which Helena and all the rest of the non-entitlement communities have already, have already requested. Hopefully it's starting to come in at this point. I think Helena was about 9 million. You guys probably know better than I do. And then the other parts in there are about 250 million in a competitive grant program for going in for water and sewer funds from local governments can apply to the state. And then another, a minimum allocation amount that you can ask for based on your gas tax allocation ratio for, that you are guaranteed to get if you want to use that for water and sewer. We are going to do a town hall specifically on those two programs tomorrow at 10:00 AM. You should have received an invite for that, but feel free to jump on if you want to listen to that.
Yeah, the additional direct allocation, I think, will total about $150 million to cities, towns and counties throughout Montana.
So lots of money being thrown around for water and sewer projects at this point. There is going to be a study of the coal severance tax trust headed up by FERN for the interim. That'll be interesting. That's what you kind of always hear referred to as busting the trust. They're going to just look at that, look at the different programs that come out of that. Are there any tweaks that need to be made to that? Can it work better for local governments and for infrastructure, funding infrastructure over the long term in Montana? Tim, did you want to touch on the other broadband bill that's going to be funded with ARPA?
Yeah, you got, again, Senator Ellsworth carried this bill, Senate Bill 297. Kelly, I think it's just over 200 million that's set aside for broadband investments, or at least in that neighborhood. This program's going to be managed through the Department of Commerce with their committee. And the first order of business is to put together a plan statewide that looks at unserved or underserved areas and then look at prioritization and investment of these funds. Looking for public-private partnerships as well, local government participation. And you can obviously use ARPA money to invest into broadband as well. It'll be interesting. I don't think there's anything for us to do right now while they're getting up and started relative to putting together this plan and prioritizing these investments throughout Montana. But we'll certainly be engaged and follow this through. But I think clearly the governing bodies have the ability to make broadband a priority if that's, if that's a necessary investment into infrastructure in our communities. And then I see the next one, House Bill 464, Kelly. Essentially, we've had this authority on the books to have counties and cities pass local option gas tax. Missoula County, in partnership with the city, were the first ever to pass this. And the legislature preempted it, first time I'd ever seen it in my career. But essentially overturned a local election based upon the fact that Missoula County and city had passed, passed this gas tax in accordance with the law and all public participation. And they overturned the election.
Thanks, Tim. Okay, last thing, real quick on infrastructure is that TSEP has been officially renamed to the Montana Coal Endowment Program. So MSEP. I'm not sure that makes any difference, but it's different now. Everyone will probably still call it TSEP. So couple bills with tax increment financing. It was pretty quiet in terms of talk and discussion and changes to TIF. But unfortunately, the one bill that they did get through has kind of struck a heart in, in the coffin of struck. I don't know what I'm saying, but it's, it's bad for TIF. Basically, it takes half of the 95 mils out of the increment calculation, but only for new TED districts. So it, they have been trying to get the 95 mils out of the increment calculation for at least the last three legislative sessions, and they finally succeeded in at least doing a little bit of that in this session. The Commissioner Alafon, I can never remember what MARA stands for, but the MARA Committee of Legislative Finance is really going to be focusing and having TIF discussions this interim. So strongly, I'm going to be encouraging all my communities that have districts with a TIF to get involved in that and, and really be ready to push back to support TIF in the next legislative session. That was SB 388, by the way. So let me hit on just a whole bunch of topics on land use and planning and see if you want me to dive into any of them. There was a bill that now tries at least to put a limitation on how much the court ordered exemption can be used in subdivision by telling courts they can't use it unless it's limited to four, four new lots. I don't know if you can tell a court what to do, but that's the attempt there. And then it's in compliance with zoning. We have an expedited subdivision review bill, SB 161. This was the league's attempt to work with the Realtors and builders to come up with something that would help kind of streamline their subdivision process by eliminating those places where there was really duplicate review and analysis. So when they are already meeting zoning and when they're already meeting all the development standards and zoning standards that apply to them, they get a shortened expedited subdivision review process. I've done a specific, a training on that for the city attorneys and planners. It's available on the league and MMA website if you want to go into detail about how that process should work. HB 259 prohibits any inclusionary housing ordinance, either through zoning or through subdivision. That was really aimed at Bozeman and Whitefish. We are going to be doing, and this probably relates to all of these, we're going to be working in the interim on a continuation of the working group that worked on that expedited subdivision review with the builders, planners, Realtors, surveyors, to try to come up with some more broad-based, global changes and updates to the land use and planning statutes. So stay tuned for that. And I might be dragging certain cities' planners into that to help give us some feedback on what will work on the ground. SB 174 requires heightened findings for conditions when they are imposed on a subdivision. I think the, the way to deal with this generally is to make sure that almost all, if not all that, not all of your conditions on subdivisions are incorporated into your subdivision regulations so that they're legislatively adopted and you've got the grounds and the evidence behind them in those regulations. So then you don't have to deal with it on a case-by-case basis. But if you do come up with them on the fly for a particular subdivision, just be aware that there's kind of a heightened standard now for walking through your findings for any one of those conditions. HB 496 is interesting. It kind of came out of an issue in Helena in part. You guys might remember the issue that came up with the school and the historic permit that was issued to the school district to tear down Central School. And there had been a lot of discussion since that time about how this interacts between different state and local agencies when they are not in compliance or going to do a use not in compliance with existing zoning regulations. And this had come up in billings. That's what really drove this bill. But essentially, it takes away the language that's in the statute that says that the BOA does not have the authority to deny the use. So you have what's called the, I believe, the 402 hearing. And then you, and then there was language that said the BOA could hold the hearing, take public comment, but then they couldn't deny the use. That language that they can't deny the use is now taken out. So it's silent as to what happens afterwards. But I think that leaves a little bit more flexibility for the agencies to kind of work together to figure out the best way forward in terms of what, what the impacts are of the use and how it can best reflect what the community wants to see for that property. What else? You can't review or mitigate for the loss of agricultural soils specifically anymore. You can look at the impacts to agriculture and agricultural, agricultural use facilities, but you can't look at agricultural soils. This was really an issue specific to Missoula County. I don't know if Helena has any specific language about looking at soils, but if you do, you're going to have to figure out a way to, to replace that language. Um, I think that's about it for overview for land use. Like I said, there were a ton of proposals that we were able to, to put off changes to the statutes on the, on the idea that we would work on them in the interim to kind of come up with better global approach and do some planning and deal with some of the issues that we're, what we're dealing with right now, like lack of housing. Water and wastewater, the real bill I want to bring to your attention is SB 358. This was our bill working with some of the industry point source dischargers to repeal numeric nutrient standards, which had never gone into effect because they had been litigated as soon as they went into effect and held in abeyance. So we want to move away from the numeric standards, which are very, very difficult for our city point dischargers to meet and move to a narrative standard with specifically what's called a AMP. And now, of course, I'm going to-
Adaptive Management Plan.
Thank you. Adaptive, so many, so many acronyms. Adaptive Management Program, which essentially looks at a watershed basis to figure out what those point sources are dealing with in terms of existing quality and then come up with more of a flexible standard, looking at phosphorus first hopefully, and then non-point source contributions and coming up with a more technically and financially feasible way to clean the water instead of just a, a random numeric standard. So we're on that right now during the interim with DEQ and the working group and all the interested parties to come up with those rules now.
Kelly, I would just, that cities and towns invest more public dollars into clean water than any other level of government until probably most recently the federal government with the ARPA funds. And the, the change from numeric to the narrative standard has absolutely nothing to do with lessening our commitment to clean water. It has to do with putting in place reasonable, achievable, measurable standards. Whereas when we were at the numeric level, the standards were not achievable, either financially or technologically. And so we look around to our neighboring states that are presently using narrative standards, which we used before, you know, 15 or 20 years ago, walking down the numeric path and realizing that it's just not achievable in the way that, that you measure clean water investments. So Kelly Lynch, working with your Public Works Directors authored this bill about the first quarter into the session. And I think as most of you are aware, we're working with the seven large and the smaller Public Works Directors. We've retained Amanda McGinnis and HDR as technical assistants through the process. And we're all engaged and we meet as necessary.
Okay, so now I'm going to burn through a whole bunch of local control bills. I'm just going to basically name them so you know they're out there. And, and maybe we'll end this with a little talk about some work on the upcoming local government review process that will be happening again in 2024. So you can no longer be a sanctuary city or have any ordinance or resolution that, that purports to make you a sanctuary city. It's my understanding that no city in the state has anything that reaches that level at this point. But just be aware that there is now a bill that kind of specifies what you can and can't do in terms of ordering your employees or staff not to enforce federal immigration laws. I will jump forward to say at the same time, they passed House Bill 223, which requires local law enforcement to hold a immigrant on a immigration detainer request for 48 hours. Unless, and there's some exception there unless that person can demonstrate that they are, in fact, in the country lawfully. There is a whole bunch of different changes to public health and officers. I know you guys are dealing with that in Helena, as are many of our communities that have a city-county health departments. I've done a presentations on all of the public health bills and an overview of all of those and how they work together. That is also on the league and MMA website, if you'd like to review that, probably the best way to kind of see how they all work together. But House Bill 121, House Bill 257 deals with public health and restrictions on businesses. There is, House Bill 258 deals with enforcement of federal firearms ban. Sorry, just jumped to guns. I've also done an overview of the gun changes to the law. That's a presentation that's on our website. And that includes also House Bill 102, which really, for the most part, did not change things for us. Most of the changes that affected local governments was in LR 130. So, but in that overview, I talk about the, the differences between those and how those each affect us. You can't pass a local ordinance dealing, restricting plastic bags, plastic utensils. You can't have local minimum wage ordinances, although I think it's our belief that that was probably already preempted under the powers denied in special, in self-governing powers. There was a bill that, that says that you can regulate vaping with local laws, but you cannot prohibit the sales- with local laws, but you cannot prohibit the sales of it entirely. So if that's something you're interested in looking at, you can take a look at SB three ninety eight. As you know, there's a recreational marijuana bill that was passed. I've done a training on that as well. That's on the website if you want to take a look at the specifics. But essentially it, it won't change what you're doing now with respect to how you can regulate medical marijuana. It's going to be very similar for you in being able to have those same authority over regulating recreational marijuana. The big difference with House Bill seven oh one is you will be able to, to have a petition locally to put a local option tax on recreational marijuana products. And so you can look through the details of how that process might work. And then House Bill seven oh two is a new discrimination added to the discrimination laws that you can't discriminate against people on the basis of being vaccinated. And I went over that and the details of that in the public health presentation as well. I think that's it. How's that for a quick hits?
Nice job, Kelly and Tim. Commissioners, any questions for these two?
I have a few questions, Kelly. So first I'm just wondering on Osmondson Bill, Senate Bill two twelve. What's the time, what's the effective date on that? When do we have to start kind of reporting out what type of mills? You know, voted, et cetera.
So that's a really good question, Commissioner. I am not sure if it requires any work on your part.
Okay.
I, my understanding is that that information is going to come from DOR and DOR will reach out to the counties if they need something clarified.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay. Um, and then I had a question on, and maybe this is actually really a question for Thomas. Related to, so Senate Bill one seventy four and sort of the heightened scrutiny on conditions for subdivision. Can you give me a sense of, you know, subdivision, subdivisions that we've gone through and the, you know, the recent past and conditions that we've put in place? Are those reflected in our ordinance? Or like from your standpoint, is this something worth the city commission? You know, reviewing to, to see whether or not there needs to be modifications to our ordinance?
Sure, Mayor Potem, Commissioner Loughlin. I think it's mostly a function of our staff reports and ultimately the findings of fact that the commission adopts. We're going to have to review our subdivision ordinances anyways, and we can take a look at it there. I am not too terribly concerned with it because I think although we haven't done a lot of subdivisions in the last few years. Post Aspen Trails Ranch case, I think we've done a very good job of basically doing what this bill already requires, which is, you know, explaining what the, the, the adverse impact that you're trying to meet under the sub Montana subdivision planning act, primary review criteria, and tying those to a specific condition. Our, our staff reports and proposed findings of fact even, you know, put a little bracket saying this is related to condition number one. But it never hurts to always look at those with fresh eyes every time we go through with a subdivision. So.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other question?
Mr. Mayor Potem, I do have one question. So I know, well, first, thank you, Kelly and Tim for really great presentation, super helpful. And the resources you provided to were also really helpful. And I'm wondering, especially in terms of HB six thirty two. And then I know there were a number of other bills that had the same thing. At the end, there's quite a few sections that are like contingency language of, you know, if this happens, then this happens in terms of shuffling money around. Do any of the bills that were, that are impacting local governments, is, are those impacted similarly based on that contingency language or are we okay?
Yeah, Mayor Potem, Commissioner Dean, I think all, those were almost exclusively related to the moving of the money from the TSEP account, from the RRGL account, from HB fourteen bonding and replacing those with ARPA. I haven't found, I've gone through every one of those contingencies and that's all I've, that's all I've found.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions while we've got these two captive?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tim. For either Mr. Burton or Ms. Lynch, any interim study committees or things of that nature that, that are jumping out at you that you might like to talk about?
Well, I think an important one is in the savage committee looking at public pensions. And, you know, they just got started, I think it was just late last week, trying to define what that review of pensions will, will look like. As you all know, I, I would like to keep them focused on what do we do now? What do we do well? If there's a gap, what is it? You know, we're looking at long-term investments here, not playing with portfolios every year or two. So trying to keep them focused on, on the long range of our pension systems. I think as you guys know, in twenty thirteen, we did a lot of good work shoring up our pensions. And local government at the time forgave future deposits into the TSEP fund. And that money was redirected to shore up PERS. We need to remind these people that that money is still there. It's still going into the pensions. And at least the deal back in the day was when the pensions are actuarially sound, then those deposits would start going back into the TSEP account to grow the, the corpus. So, you know, and then I, I just we'll obviously monitor that. I mean, the, the committees that make up the infrastructure committee, the broadband committee, all of those committees under six thirty two and two ninety seven are going to be critically important to follow. And as, as Kelly said, the Mara Committee headed up by Representative Jones is constantly taking a run at cities and counties and property taxes. And remember, we only make up thirty percent of the property tax base. And for some reason, they don't want to talk about the other seventy percent of the property tax base. So we feel that we're going to have to bring our elected officials into this Mara Committee and, and make sure that they're not misrepresenting what's actually happening in Montana and that we keep them focused and deliberate in terms of assessing what, if anything, do we do in response to, to property taxes? I think Commissioner Logan, those are the big ones as I see them.
Well, and Mayor Pro Tim, maybe. Oh, Commissioner Logan, did you have a follow up?
I'm just gonna thank him for his response. Thanks.
I, I was just gonna fo- follow up on that and just say, I mean, I think you, Kelly pointed out, just sort of emphasizing the value of TIF districts and urban renewal districts is going to be really important. And I think, you know, this came, they've studied TIF districts so much. It's like, there's just so much information there. But I think the, the Great Northern District is a perfect example of a district that really shows significant increased value and really a dedicated effort by the city to invest that, you know, subsequent of that, you know, that TIF district ending, we've seen, you know, the, the value citywide. And so I think that is something potentially that the city can emphasize as a really good example of a TIF district. And I actually had a question. And I, I, I actually am serving on that interim committee in my day job. So full disclosure on that. But I, I was curious, Kelly, there's continued conversation about the finances of local governments as well. And just sort of have the transparency of local government budgets and like the legislators wanting to understand how local governments budget, how, you know, special districts, proprietary funds. And I'm just curious, in your mind, where, like, how is the league communicating on those issues? Where, where all do you stand on some of those conversations? And what are ways that, that your members can be helpful on, on that kind of broader sort of scrutiny over local government budgets?
Yes, I know Tim is the one who usually handles all the property tax discussions. I'll turn it over to him. But one of the things I will say is that the Infrastructure Coalition, which I'm the co-chair, and I know a whole bunch of your, including Helen and a whole bunch of the, our other members are direct members of the coalition as well. We are going to be spending a lot of time and almost exclusively in this interim working on coming up with the data that kind of documents the, the other narrative about how local property taxes really play out, how each area in a city or a county is very different in terms of what they pay, depending on what kind of district they're in, what kind of services they're getting. And so being able to start that narrative to push back on that is something we're going to really be focused on for the Infrastructure Coalition.
Yeah, and I think also in partnership with the league and Mako, this, this started last interim with the Mara Committee and also HJ thirty five studying property taxes. There's, there's policy and political agendas behind these discussions. And we just need to make sure that the best data that we use to make decisions with is available. Remember, cities and counties don't have a centralized repository for budgets and or audits. And that's on purpose. There are a hundred and twenty seven independent cities and fifty six independent counties governed by Montana law. Whereas the state of Montana has a SABR system. And there are some policymakers up in the Capitol that want to have a SABR system for cities and counties. But it doesn't exist. And the data that does exist through the census is not representative in category or accuracy, what's actually happening through our local governments in Montana. Interestingly, and Kelly mentions the Infrastructure Coalition, we're looking right now at hiring Terry Johnson, who many of you know, worked in legislative arenas for decades and one of the financial experts in terms of taxes in Montana to put together the data that actually is accurate and we can use to show. I mean, the, the fact of the matter is, people will say local government taxes are growing at six percent. They never talk about the fact that, that state income taxes over the last two decades has been growing at nine percent. So you can't just rely on thirty percent of the property tax base. And we all know that our property tax base grows at half the rate of inflation over the last three years average, unless the people vote a tax increase on themselves. That's not rocket science. And so we're working with Mako, we met on this probably just a week ago, and the Infrastructure Coalition interviewed Terry Johnson, looking at getting the good data set together and coming up with good and accurate narratives that represent our position as a way to push back against this Mara approach.
Commissioners, any final questions?
Mayor Pro Tim, I have one more question if that's okay. So just as we, as we're thinking about the use of ARPA funds, I'd just be curious about like what you're seeing across cities and towns, how they're sort of planning for ARPA funds. You know, many of us are sort of in the midst of our budget cycle, how they're budgeting those funds. And just, yeah, kind of like, are, are there some best practices or some things that you're seeing across your membership that the city of Helena might want to think about?
Yeah, so first of all, I would point you to our ARPA website on the league's page. We've got a whole bunch of stuff from the National League on there that talks about what other cities around the nation are kind of thinking about doing. Unfortunately, because we just kind of had to spend the last two weeks making sure everybody asked for their ARPA funds. And now we've got to kind of turn around and immediately work on it for the next two weeks, getting everyone to put their water and sewer project requests in because that deadline is July fifteenth. I feel like that's going to naturally put a whole bunch of stuff into that. And then we'll kind of have the fallout to decide, all right, what's left? What do we have? Now what's a good, where's a good place to put this stuff? And so happy to help facilitate those discussions among the communities in Montana and see, okay, now that we've dealt with our water and sewer projects, what's left? What do you guys think about doing?
Right, and I, I think you're aware that we're having a statewide town hall tomorrow on the two hundred and fifty million competitive process with the state folks that have put that together relative to the, the ranking criteria, the timeframes, et cetera. And so at least probably for the next week or two, I think we're going to be spending a lot of our time directing people and answering questions as Kelly said. And at the same time, we're engaged in the bipartisan infrastructure bill as well. So that's, that's also a, a big deal. It's taking time and certainly we're coordinating with, with our delegation and with the National League to see how that moves its way through Congress as well.
Tim, quick question about that bill that Biden's bill and this, this larger infrastructure bill. I haven't had a, a great deal of time to read through the potential, but one of the gaps in ARPA was transportation and funding for roads and streets and the like. Has there been discussion on funding to more than just the states, but instead also locally? You know, I, I get that the idea is to be another new deal in some way. But those new deal options are always state level and would love to hear what you're hearing on, on a local.
Well, from, from our perspective in the discussions that we have with the other league directors and Clarence Anthony, clearly we need money into, into roads and bridges to complement additional funding into sewer water broadband and other infrastructure definitions that are, are being discussed about. I think the bill's still fluid. I know that we have the bipartisan compromise, but it still has to make its way through the process. And, but we've, we've certainly represented through Montana and through the National League with all of the discussions that have been taking place the last couple of years. And I think we were very successful with Senator Test for getting sewer water and broadband eligible under the ARPA. We're having similar discussions that it's just as critical that we get transportation and bridge type eligibility out of the infrastructure bill. And just like we did in ARPA, we're also talking about direct allocations to local governments. And now that they know how to do it, it just makes a lot of sense to continue down that road.
That's great news. We're also looking at that, the pace of the water and sewer and trying to figure out staggering. Are we going to get the competitive grant? Do we get that? Oh, hey, Mayor Collins is joining. So I'm glad to hear you're, you're experiencing some of that stagger issue that we're having. Do you know when, is there any timing in mind with that federal bill on infrastructure?
I think it's fluid. I, I know that the president had a timeframe by which he wanted it done. And, but I can't remember if we're keeping pace with that or not. My hope would be that at some point this August, by the end of summer, that bill, I hope, is wrapped up. that bill, I hope, is wrapped up.
Thank you.
All right, last call, Commissioners. All right, Kelly, Tim, thanks again for your time.
Andres, please, Commissioner Halliday, before we move on, I would just like to add in a couple of items before they hop out. The two, Tim and Kelly, thank you for all of the work you did during this odd COVID time in the legislation and moving these bills and calling on us when we could help and step in. I know that the city of Helena, being here, helps push voice to those locals who may not be able to get here. So I also appreciate when you reach out to us that you're thoughtful about how we can be of help in the bigger picture. But I just wanted to flag a couple of things before you hop off. For the Commission, I understand that House Bill 701, which is the taxing on marijuana, sets an allowance for the county to address taxation of 30% on sales tax. I understand the county is contemplating putting that out to the voters this year. If, in fact, that passes, there is 45% that comes back by pro-rata population basis to both East Helena and Helena. And those dollars are an opportunity for discussion around. And I don't even know what what those would look like by way of total into the city. But that would cover both recreational and and medical marijuana. Is that correct? So so there's potential for those dollars to come to Helena if it were to pass in November as a ballot. And then on the Governor Jim Porter, I guess, lifted our emergency, our COVID emergency today. So I know we'll all be staggering out and behind behind that, removing those emergency orders. But aside from from that, I know that you all are coming to Helena for the League's conference.
Yes, this October. We appreciate all the help that your folks are giving us in terms of organizing the conference. I think we're going to have some excellent speakers, excellent breakout sessions, an excellent location, and also some pretty fine facilities in the Helena Civic Center. So it'll be nice to get back together again. I'll tell you that, you know, it worked okay considering we had to have a remote conference last year under the circumstances. But one of the more constant comments that we get from our members and our counterparts throughout Montana is we need to start, once this COVID dies down a little bit, we need to start getting back together again. And so I think there's a lot of excitement about the Helena Conference this year.
Thank you, Commissioner Halliday. Thank you, Kelly and Tim.
All right, thanks, Kelly and Tim again. And that that finishes up with the City Attorney update. And I see the mayor is on, so Mayor Collins, I'm happy to turn it over to you, if you'd like, for item number five.
Please continue, Commissioner. I appreciate you going ahead.
Well, shoot. All right. Item number five, direction, feedback needed, transportation systems, Custer Avenue reconstruction MOA with MDT. That you, Ms. Arlo Schalk, or Mr. Knopki?
Yeah, I will punt it over to David to provide an update on this project and the memorandum of understanding with our friends at MDT.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Commissioners. So this is very similar to the document that we presented a couple of months ago. We wanted to put it back in front of you to review and ensure that there's any comments or concerns that we can take back to MDT and work out with our partners there at MDT. But, you know, just a quick overview. The TCC, the Transportation Coordinator Committee, through a decision matrix, selected Custer Avenue for reconstruction some years ago. It's been currently in an OT phase, which is an other phase to get some feasibility studies done to see about utility relocates, whether or not we're, you know, roundabouts versus traffic signals, looking to, do we have enough right away? Things of that nature to kind of get to set the project up for success through the design and construction. As as everyone recalls, the initial estimate for the project came out rather higher than anyone really, really liked. There were some reductions after some utilities were looked at and viewed as they were in an okay location to proceed with the project. The the cost estimate is still in the mid 20 million range, which would put us somewhere getting to about Benton instead of the goal of getting all the way down to Henderson and redoing that intersection in front of the fairgrounds to promote better access to the fairgrounds. But, you know, this is what we have. We're going to, the project right now is kind of slated to go to Benton. And this MOA would serve to move the Custer Avenue reconstruction project forward. In essence, this this MOA is for the city, even though it's transportation or TCC. Allocated dollars, the majority of the project falls within the city limits. So that responsibility falls to the City Commission to agree to the terms stated in the the MOA. And just like to add that we have two representatives from MDT to answer any questions, and I'm available to answer any questions or concerns that you may have.
Thanks, Mr. Knopki. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Knopki?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I have a couple. And so I guess one of the things within here that I'm a little bit worried about, and both Commissioner Loughlin and I were not in favor of this when it came up during the TCC. When it was discussed whether it would be to a certain point, whether that be Benton or Henderson or some filler, for example. We had advocated that it be based on how much money was available and not a specific length. Because, as you all have seen in here, the city's on the hook for anything that's over those funds, which greatly concerns me, especially given, you know, the rising costs of this project. And so I'm just wondering how we can, I do not, I don't want to see us in a situation where we have to accept a lesser quality road because of the lack of funds and being put in a position where we have to make it to a particular street. So that's one thing I'm concerned about, and I don't know if there's anyone has any solutions about how to deal with that. The other thing that I just want to know, and I'd be anxious to see if, you know, staff has any thoughts on how we can maybe work with this. And this might be something that you have to come back to us with. But within the document, it specifically lists the five lane urban arterial. And I, I think that I feel like we hamstring ourselves by having that specifically included in the document, especially because that is a, I feel like that's a pretty significant community. It's a significant feature that I don't necessarily think the community has any idea could be coming. I know that during some of the TCC meetings, there's been discussion that, you know, you could have a five lane road that doesn't feel like a highway. I really have yet to see one, an example of one, particularly passing an elementary school. And, you know, this, this might be, I mean, this might be an MDT road. And, you know, within here, it talks about the highway guidelines, but it's a, it is a road that goes straight through our town. It is not a highway, even if you want to call it that. And so I'm, those are the things that I'm really concerned about. Obviously, it it needs improvement, but I, you know, there's lots of data and research to show that, you know, congestion is not actually mitigated by adding lanes. And I know this is a big debate within the transportation community nationally, but those are some of my, you know, high level significant concerns. And I'd like to see how we can figure out how to deal with those before signing anything like this, especially given, you know, I don't, there's very little understanding in the community that this is even coming up. And would be a pretty drastic change to just the the neighborhood that's that's used over there. So just some of my thoughts, and I don't know if staff has any ideas about how to address some of these concerns, because I'm not sure.
Well, yeah. It's disappointing. We were pretty excited. I was pretty excited to have the Executive Director for MDT, who had shared they were interested in opportunities for partnerships. And it's really disappointing to see this kind of document come out. And as I understand it, we're not alone in our disappointment. I'm going to punt over to Thomas to share a little bit about what this document does. But I am not sure why the MDT believes that they have a better understanding of rural and in our own hometown, what it looks like to do roadwork and how we need to be hamstrung. So I'm just going to punt that over to Thomas a little bit. I, it's to answering the question, is there any legroom for us to to wager anything here? I don't, I don't know. But, Thomas?
Sure, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners. I think it's unusual. I have not seen an agreement like this at this stage of such a project. Usually, we have a relatively standardized template with MDT once the project has been approved by the Highway Commission. And so that, I think, Commissioner Dean, you you pointed out one of the issues is that it commits the city based on unknown future decisions of MDT. One of those is that overages will be paid by the city. That combined with the fact that there's, there's no flexibility or consideration for local needs or design standards. And that's been a topic of of great discussion in the in the working group that the League and MMIA and MDT have been having for several years now. We've, we've worked through the, and I won't get too technical, but there are two template agreements we've been working on. We've wrapped up the city maintained routes agreement and are now working on the state maintained agreement. But that continues to be one of the struggles is the ability to have these contracts reflect or have the, yeah, reflect local design standards, especially with regard to non-motorized facilities. I would like to think that there is an opportunity, obviously, to negotiate that. And I think MDT will be willing to listen to it. But at least in the past, there's been very little way of room in that regard.
Commissioner, any follow up? Or I see Mr. Knopki has unmuted.
I do have another follow up, but I'll let David go first because it's a, it's it's related, but not exactly in the same line of of questioning.
Mayor Protem, Commissioner, we have, we have MDT on the line if you would like to pose those questions as far as the five lane urban arterial in the agreement itself. It was my understanding that in in our discussions previously, that the TDC, the Technical Group that would be formed to help make some decisions along the design and during construction, that would be where we would get our input. And, you know, maybe that was just an oversight or whatever. But, you know, I was under the impression that that was some of the stuff that during the design, the city would have input. So I don't think it would be that huge a deal, but I would defer to MDT to take that language out so that we could analyze other possibilities. You know, whether it's a four lane or maybe it, you know, ends up being a five lane, I don't know. But we've done the feasibility study, but there's still a lot of design work to do leading up to this. So I see Jim Winkler is on.
And I wonder, I wonder if, just, I don't know if other Commissioners have questions, but I wonder if we put some of those in a basket and let the Commissioners either ask them and we can get some follow up from MDT. I'm just, I think there's, there might be more questions and concerns here. And I think it'd be better if we kind of get those out so that we're not doing sort of a a piecemeal discussion, Commissioners, if that works.
So, Mr. Mayor Protem, my other question was with the new administration, I know that the Secretary of Transportation Pete Buttigieg has lots of experience in local government and dealing with similar issues and has said that this type of, well, I'm just going to say, overreach into making decisions that impact local communities very directly. Change in policy could be coming, coming from the federal Youth Department of Transportation. And I'm wondering, you know, what what do we do in terms of maybe trying to find flexibility in in some federal regulations that could impact this? And I don't know if that's a direct question for, it's not necessarily a direct question for anyone, but and I don't know if the manager has any thoughts, but that's something that I do think that we should be considering because it is something that this new administration has said that they do want to deal with, particularly as we likely have a new infrastructure package, you know, that that may or may not be passed soon. And and this could be impacting that.
Thanks, Commissioner Dean. I know I'd be curious, too, if Commissioner Loughlin's heard anything from the National League of Cities. I know she's got, she's one of the state's reps on the larger conversation. And the I'm not sure the best way to answer your question because ultimately, it's this contract language that impacts our ability to do the work and dedicates dollars the city doesn't have to something that isn't a project that is on our radar. And and we don't, we don't get to control the project, we don't get to control the bids. Those are all things that are outside of our process, but yet we have to to cover. So I'm not sure the best way to address, address these these decisions when they're not ours.
You know, before I ask if anyone else has a question, I mean, this, this was, this has been the conversation. I'll, I'll talk about history again. This has been the conversation since Custer started. You know, the city, the city and its internal folks and the the TCC didn't, didn't want the project in this form. And it came in from the county and MDT's representative and outside of city limits that that all outside of city limits that, that ultimately voted this thing through. Um, and now here we are talking about whether or not we're going to pay the overage for when this project that was originally calc'd out in the seven million range, um, which, but apparently there was a secret number that was actually closer to the amount, eleven million dollar range. And then that was actually not the real number. It was closer to the fourteen million dollar range. And then it turns out that it was actually closer to twenty-one million. And then we've seen numbers up to twenty-six million. Um, it's, it is incredibly frustrating and MDT hasn't been straightforward with us on this project. And I, I sympathize and empathize and commiserate with you, Commissioner Dean, because when, when we said, you know, this was our chance with the, the TCC vote back in the day. Um, let's not do this. Members of the TCC who voted to make Custer the, the promoted urban project, the priority, said, oh, oh, don't worry. All of this will get addressed in the design process, right? It'll, it'll all be candy and flowers at that point. Um, problem was, once you made that vote, that was the end. We handed it to MDT for the design process. We, we put the whole thing backwards on this odd representation that somehow we were going to have a later discussion. Um, so I, I share your frustration and I have some questions, but I'll, I'll let the other commissioners ask any if they have.
Mayor Pro Tem, I don't have any substantive questions, I don't think, for MDT, but I, I do have some process questions perhaps after, if there's interest in hearing from MDT.
Well, I, I have a question just for the city attorney, I guess. I mean, I know we've been talking about this TDC or PDC or whatever these additional, um, design groups that have some all or no power. It's not totally clear from the, the MOU what exactly they can do, what's, what's omitted, what's included. In the absence of this agreement, um, if, if this project were just going forward without those pieces, is, is it normal in your experience to have a provision where one member of this community, right? Because our urban area is the city portions of the county and East Toluana. Is it normal to have only one piece of that? We'll call it trifecta, be the backer bank for the project?
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, I, I would defer to David again because it's unusual to have a contract, MOA at this stage of the, of the project. We usually see the template, uh, MOA with MDT. Once uh, the project is approved and is going to get started and we lay out, you know, the city is going to be responsible for maintaining the sidewalks and the features, uh, as MDT calls them. So I, I can't say for certain, but at least with regard to those template agreements that we have seen, it's, it's not something that I have seen where one, one particular party, uh, has a role in it, although we, in my time, I have not been involved in a project of this potential size. They've been smaller.
Well, and if Mr. Knopki has thoughts, I mean, was there any discussion as to why the city is the party here and not say the city, the county, the city of East Toluana, all as sort of joint members of, of the TCC, of custodians of these urban funds?
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, the reason that the, so the, the TDC, from my understanding makeup is not in stone. Um, that's part of the reason for the review of the document, but I would assume, just like why this MOA is coming to the city, the predominant, the project is predominantly within the city. So the city would be the representative because the maintenance and the overages and all those things that have been mentioned before would fall to the city's shoulders and not our partners in the, in the TCC. And I would agree with Thomas, um, on, on his recollection with these agreements. We've never participated in a TDC and I think there's, um, there, the MDT has instances in the state where TDCs have been used, um, in the process. And that was, um, that was a solution presented to the, from MDT to try to, I guess, get the say from the city point of view in some of these discussions along the way.
Any other questions right now for Mr. Knopki or Mr. Jodan or the manager? Otherwise, if, if, yeah, if you have a question.
Just one more question. Yeah, throw in the basket was, um, for those other projects in the state that used a TDC. Was it the same type of contract where the city is on the hook for overages that are unknown until it happens? And then I think gives you thirty days to pay it.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Dean. I, I would have to defer to MDT on that. But I, I thought, I, I, I'm recollecting that the, this overages is a bit newer than some of these older, maybe these projects that have been completed in, in, you know, numerous years past. But I would defer that, uh, question to MDT, um, if the commission would like to ask that of MDT.
Well, I guess at this point, it probably behooves us to hear from MDT and I'm sure people will have other questions or follow-up. So I, I'm not sure who's here from MDT, but feel free to unmute or be promoted.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Jim Wingeter and I am the district administrator here in Great Falls. The, the district encompasses Helena to Fort Belknap to Browning, the north central Montana Triangle area. And, and as you know, Helena falls into the Great Falls District. So I've been in this chair about fourteen months, so I'm drinking from the fire hose as the proverbial saying goes, so I'm learning as I go. I will say that with this project here, my participation to this point, we are trying to work with the city, work with the county, come up with an agreement that was, that was agreeable and workable for all parties and be very transparent as to what our intentions were and what our thoughts are. As I listen to this discussion tonight, I, I'm not sure that this is the right forum or time to get down in the weeds with this discussion. I guess I would like to propose that we at MDT sit down with you folks and have a face-to-face discussion at our office in Helena, at your office there, wherever, wherever we can meet with you folks. You could put a basket full of questions together. We would answer those questions. We would walk you through what our proposals are. I am not, uh, one hundred percent sure of the answers you would have, but I would have folks along with me that could answer those questions, or we would have resources available to us to get those answers to you at that meeting. I very much am in favor of working with you folks on this project as the district administrator. I will tell you that the folks in our, on our headquarters office, starting with Director Malcolm Long, is very much supportive of this project. There are a lot of constraints that we must follow as a state agency, uh, handed down through our federal partners. So, so, so this is a very difficult and, uh, very tough, uh, situation for everybody to work, work through and, and come up with decisions that are going to be acceptable to everyone. To be very honest with you, I, I, I enjoy face-to-face conversations rather than talking into a screen as we are, and, and I wouldn't be much more comfortable in a face-to-face situation, answering the questions that you have and, and entertaining those and getting the information that you need and, and be very forthright in what we're attempting to do at MDT.
Well, I mean, Commissioners, I don't know. We've posed some questions. I mean, we've heard from Mr. Wingeter. I see the city manager has unmuted. I mean, I, I will just say for my, my opinion, um, I, I enjoy a good face-to-face meeting as well. We've had a number of these on Custer. Um, you know, and again, you're fourteen months in, so don't want to curse you with, with the sins of your, your forefathers. Um, but we haven't always gotten the, the greatest responses from MDT. When in the same room, um, and I think some of the best conversations we've had about this have been at public meetings, whether in the same room or whether on Zoom, um, where we all answer one another's questions and are full and forthright about this project. You know, rather than say a, a roundtable discussion or a director to manager or a director to individual commissioner type relationship. Because, um, this is a huge project and you're right, it's a complex project. And there's a ton of moving pieces and we don't know what the design looks like. We have been given numbers ranging from seven million to twenty-six million. Uh, we've been told it can be limited, it can't be limited. Now we're being presented with a document where we're going to pick up the, the bill. Right? If there are overages, um, and we've seen a number quoted of five million higher. So, um, you know, I appreciate you want a break with that past. We've been, I've been disappointed with the answers we've gotten in the past in the, um, both public and sort of non-public settings. So, um, I'd love a, a sit-down face-to-face, but I'd certainly want it to be a public meeting from my perspective. I'm happy to provide questions ahead of time, but I do think for taxpayer purposes, for public awareness, um, boy, this thing needs to be a heckle a lot more transparent than it's been. And I'll get off my soapbox because I see Commissioner Loughlin's hand up.
Yes, and I'll go, I'll wait till you're done, Commissioner Loughlin. But I also would like to add some.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I just have a quick process question for Director Knopki. Can you remind me when TCC meets again?
Mayor Pro Tem Commissioner, let me look that up on our calendar.
I think it's September. September, okay. Like September seventh, is that right? Okay, because that, I guess that's a question that I have. One, what, you know, so this is on our agenda today. I'm not exactly sure if there, it like what the commission's role is versus TCC's role. Um, the extent to which Commissioner Dean and I, you know, if, if there is concern with what, what's articulated in this memorandum today. Is this a conversation that TCC needs to take up again? That I'm just not quite clear of, of the process. If ultimately, you know, the city has concerns with this memorandum.
Would that, um, it seems as though it would be to the next phase, which is now we're moving to implementation. So we've gotten out of the place of, you know, policy. And now we're actually at rubber hits the road and the rubber hits the road. You know, I, I appreciate Jim, I, when I first started, I think you were a couple of months in as well when I met you online and um, at that time though, I had been pretty clear. I was hoping that we could be more proactive as opposed to reactive. And I think that's, this is the exact space we're in right now, which is having to react to something that we've never seen before. So yeah, I'm absolutely interested in sitting down with legal across the, the two organizations and getting to a better space. But you gotta know, like it's asking an organization to cover the cost for somebody else's work that we have no control over just does not sit well. So I, I'm sure you know that already and you're not shocked to hear it. So I, I am curious as to how we get to some sort of compromise from there. So I think that's just a non-starter for us in a big picture. So I would be curious how we get there and that, that seems more, I don't know that TCC could even provide any more than that statement, which is where are you at, MDT? And, and we'll sit down with you and if, if you could come with that answer, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I guess it sort of depends where the city manager's office is ultimately in signing a memorandum like this. I mean, I think that there's enough concern from commissioners about I, I think Commissioner Dean's, you know, question about the extent to which the city is on the hook for the costs is, is a very big one. And again, goes right back to the discussion and, and ultimate decision by the TCC to approve this project in the way that it did, right? So if, if ultimately the city says, listen, we can't commit to something like this. I, I just am wondering, is it, can it go back to the TCC to reconsider again, approving a project at a certain cost, right? Um, committing our urban funds for, you know, what we've got right now, whether or not the TCC wants to commit future funds. I, I think that's a question, right? And something that I guess I would ask the staff to also think about. If we can't get to a place with MDT on this, do we need to take it back to the TCC?
Well, and I guess, I mean, I do, I do want to make sure, I mean, I appreciate we're at the stage of sort of talking through, uh, an MOU, but I, I think Commissioner Dean has raised some questions. Um, and I know I have in the past as well about just what design looks like. And I understand that maybe, maybe the die is cast on that, but we're being proposed to have these sort of working committees within it that it's not really clear what their jurisdiction or scope are. Um, how much of any of these discussions on, on substantive design components are even available anymore? You know, I do, I do think those questions that, that Commissioner Dean has asked go to the fundamental question of whether even we want to sign this thing. I mean, process question of like, what if we don't sign this? Does the process just, project just proceed down the road? Um, or is it stalled out completely at MDT's mind? And I don't know if that's a question you can answer today, Jim, but just for that process, if the commission were to just say to the manager, please don't sign this MOU, at least not in this form. Are you guys still working on this thing? Or does it require Helen to signature to move forward?
So Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, uh, again, thank you for, for allowing us to, to comment on this. Um, I'm, because of my lack of experience on this, I'm very hesitant to answer those technical questions right now you are asking, because I, I'll be very blunt. I don't know those answers. And I can certainly get those answers for you. I, I, I guess what I would ask of you people is if you have these types of technical questions that need answering, you would be more than welcome to send them to me. And I would certainly get those answers for you. I'm not prepared to answer them for you at this time. And I would hate to try and give you a, a, a line that is inaccurate or, or, or half-truth and, and a half, I'm making something up to cover myself kind of thing. I don't want to go there. I want to, we, we've, we've apparently had some issues in the past with, with the city in, in this project and, and moving forward. I, I want to give you truthful, honest and open answers as we move forward. So I would ask that, that with those technical questions you have, list them out for MDT and we will get you honest answers and complete answers.
Commissioners, Commissioner Logan.
Mayor Pro Tem, thank you. Uh, so as we look at the agenda, it seemed like, um, direction was needed from the director relative to this MOA. And I guess I gotta say I'm uncomfortable with it. For the reasons that, that have been expressed here this afternoon and, and so I don't know that we as, as a group can give that direction. So today, so then, you know, what's next? And is that a meeting between representatives from the city and MDT in the short term, between any future TCC meeting? Like, like could we within the next month? Could the city meet with MDT and try to hash out some of these issues? Is that an appropriate approach or what, or what happens next?
Well, and I'm, I'm happy to hear Commissioner Dean or Commissioner Loughlin's thoughts. I mean, I'll, I'll just say from my perspective, you know, one, one of my concerns, just on all of this, again, not, not to lump you in with the sins of your forefathers again, but, you know, Commissioner Dean has brought up the question of three lanes, four lanes, five lanes. I believe since the first time we talked about this project and there still has never been a clear answer. It's always been a lot of, well, there's a lot of moving parts kind of thing. And again, I get it's a tough project. But, you know, some of those are very fundamental questions with regard to these things. And so I'm, I'm struggling with what the best forum is, TCC, City Commission, um, some kind of sit-down meeting. But, um, a lot of these questions often do get punted. of these questions often do get punted. We've had numerous, numerous discussions on Custer, both within the city and at TCC for years on these questions. So I don't know, commissioners, your thoughts?
Uh, Mr. Mayor Protem, I would say that I think it might be worth letting Director Knopki and the city manager, following this meeting, maybe sit down and figure out process wise, what is the next best steps? Because we do have that September TCC meeting. And I think we probably want to have a conversation of some sort prior to that. But I, I clearly we, you know, there needs to be another conversation with MDT. And it sounds like tonight is not the night to get some of those answers. And so I think it might be an opportunity for Rachel and David to come back to us with a proposed timeline as to, you know, what, what would meet our considerations and then an opportunity for us to get feedback.
And maybe from a, a process standpoint, for the manager and Mr. Knopki and, and Mr. Wingeter, you know, there've been a number of questions raised tonight. I don't know if you were keeping a checklist of them. In terms of getting those questions answered so that the next time this is brought to the TCC or comes back to the commission, those same questions are raised in the, in the interests of getting those as smoothed out and answered as possible in writing or at the next meeting, someone comes back and says, question one, here's the answer, question two. So we can really have that substantive discussion if need be. What, what's the best format for you guys to get those so that commissioners can raise their individual questions and MDT can address them as, as clearly as possible?
Yeah, I think that's exactly what we need to do is to just pick apart each of the pieces, add in your questions and then push it to Jim and his team, see if he can help get us some answers for you all. That was really the intention tonight anyway, was to, to really vet through you all. This is what we've got. This is, this is where we need to really have a critical conversation about next steps. And I know that Director Knopki and I would take this as the best next place and, and bring back to you all a recommendation, give you an update in email and make a recommendation if we have to move it to TCC or just bring it to a commission meeting or another admin. These, these study meetings like this are nice because we can have those larger, more robust conversations about what, what kinds of things need to be added. So, thank you.
Anything else from commissioners? Because this one is listed as direction needed. I'm going to take public comment at this time. So if there's anyone from the public who wishes to make public comment on this issue, please put up your hand and the city clerk will acknowledge you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, commissioners, I have no raised hands and it doesn't appear that there's any written public comment in the Q and A.
All right. Then we will close public comment on this item. Ms. Harlow Shaw, do you feel like you have direction from the commission on going forward with this one?
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on this commissioners before we move on? All right. So that brings us to item number six, information only. Anything on this one, Ms. Harlow Shaw? Are you just looking for any questions from the commissioners if they have any?
Nope. I just want to make sure you all knew that we are entering into the Main Street Grant and Multimodal Downtown Grant Award and Scoping with the team. We're working with Mickey over at the BID to put out the RFP and actually get some more work specific in the downtown identified. So we're pretty excited to have this project. It is not only a partnership with, with us, but also, and the BID, but Mback and the Chamber. So it's, it's exciting to have that partnership. That's it. Thank you.
All right, commissioners, any questions on that? All right. Then we'll move on to item seven, review of the agenda for the next commission meeting. And I haven't seen one yet. So we'll move on from that to public comment. So for anyone who wishes to make public comment on any item that was not listed on our agenda, and I'd include in there anything from the original item, A, from the manager's report, which we didn't take anything on tonight because we moved on. Anyone who wants to give public comment, please put your hand up if you're in the attendees room and the city clerk will acknowledge you.
Mayor Protem, it doesn't appear there's any hands raised and no written public comment.
Okay. So the manager's indicated, that brings us to number nine, the manager's indicated that she has her direction on, on the one direction feedback needed items. So commissioners, any final discussion or comments? All right. Seeing none, this meeting's adjourned. Thanks, everyone.